Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the Calbright College Board of Trustees meeting to order on the morning of March 26 at 9:00 a.m., actually 9:01, so we'll make up that minute. And before the meeting gets started, I'd like to ask our board liaison to review the meeting procedures and protocols.
Good morning, and thank you for joining us. I am Teri Lucas, board liaison at Calbright College. You can follow our meeting agenda on board docs. The link can be found on our website, which is calbright.org/board. For attendees who wish to make public comment in person, please fill out a public comment card and submit it to me. For attendees who participate remotely, please use the Q&amp;A feature on Zoom to address the board for up to three minutes. Public comment should be used to address today's agenda. A reminder that this board meeting is being recorded. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you please call the roll?
Piltigard Aguinaldo.
Present.
Adrian Brown.
Present.
Casey Chang.
Present.
Amy Costa.
Here.
Felicia Escobar-Curio. Tom Epstein.
Here.
Nan Gomez-Hightsburg.
Here.
Pam Haynes.
Here.
Lieutenant Governor Kunalakis. Paul Medina.
Here.
Jennifer Perry. Bill Rawlings.
Here.
Mary Salas. Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Here.
Los Villa Lobos. And Joseph Williams. We have quorum President Costa.
Great, thank you so much.
I don't think my name was called.
Oh, Teri, can you note Board Member Legrand is with us as well?
I'm sorry, Harry Legrand. We have quorum President Costa.
Thank you so much. Next up, I'd like to ask our colleague trustee member Brown to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you so much. With that, colleagues, is there any discussion regarding the order of our agenda this morning? All right, seeing none, we shall proceed. We're on item 1.4, which is my president's report. I'm going to give kudos to our colleague trustee Epstein, who suggested that -- look at the shock. He's like, "What is she going to say?" No, you had a good idea, Tom, which is that we have an executive board that's part of Calbright. For our new members, it was set up when the college was nascent as a way for us to address some of the operational issues that are happening, not just on a monthly basis, but are happening much more frequently. So I'm going to just really quickly go over some of the action items from that meeting, just for transparency for the other board members. So we met on February 21, and the action agenda on that day is we approved a contract amendment to the virtual care group. We also approved the purchase of device shipping and inventory management system. As you know, we have a lot of equipment that we provide to Calbright students. And we also approved the appointment of an interim vice president of marketing, communications, and outreach. So those were our action items. Again, I would just remind folks, the meetings are recorded, they're online, as are the meeting minutes, so available to anybody to look in more detail. And with that, I will turn it over to our CEO for her report.
Thank you, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the Calbright College Board of Trustees. I'm pleased to see two new faces here today and thrilled to officially welcome Nan Gomez-Hightsburg and Syrian Villa Vicencio to the board. Their extensive experience in the classroom and with California students in higher education leadership positions is going to be a tremendous asset to Calbright's mission, particularly our efforts to really build an accessible, innovative, student-centered educational opportunity for adult learners. As we welcome new members and head into kind of the renewal of the spring season, it's a really wonderful time for us to reflect on the organization we have become and the students we've served. And Calbright was created to reach and serve adult learners across California who are disconnected from educational and economic opportunities. And it's often because their lived realities conflicted with the rigid traditional model of education that wasn't designed as much around their needs and goals. Our mission remains really focused on creating that scalable model to effectively serve non-traditional and adult learners across California who are seeking to upskill, to remain competitive in their industry, or to rescale into a new career. And that's why Calbright's unique model is not just online, but the emphasis is on being support forward, on being skills-based, and most importantly, flexibly paced, to really be able to meet students where they are and equip them with the in-demand skills that are needed in California's labor market. We're continuing to lead the way in solving for the complex equation of how best to support this community of learners. And what's really important about this is our actions are guided by the learners we serve. And they're the ones that remind us how critical it is to have flexibility and accessibility at the heart of what we do. Our most recent Student Experience Survey reflects the voices of those learners. We had 91% of respondents stating they would recommend Calbright to a friend, and specifically citing the college's support staff and sense of community, as well as the affordable and flexible aspects of the model, as the most critical components of why they chose Calbright. So we're on the right track, and we're accelerating the opportunity to expand our reach and our impact. In the last two years, our enrollment has increased 328%. Our student body now stands at roughly 4,000 students, and we've awarded over 560 certificates. And what's even more important than who is enrolling is that 90% of our students are over the age of 25, more than double the CCC rate, 70% of members of a BIPOC community, 30% of our learners are parents, which are triple the CCC rate. And our learners also represent 52 out of 58 counties in California. Given our unique student body, Calbright is also reimagining what student support looks like, including the best way to deliver it and to ensure student success in an asynchronous educational environment. So what does that experience look like from the student perspective? It's providing students with a scaffolding around their educational and support journey. And those are things like access to professional success counselors and specialists, career services programs, tutoring, and peer mentoring, just to name a few examples. It also means that we think differently as a college about the relationship with our learners and how we can continuously work towards improving their experience. It means that our choices center around offering programs and interventions that set our learners up for success in today's knowledge economy. And our programs reflect the labor market insights and the needs of fast-growing industries and sectors in both technical skills but also endurable skills. We partner with Lightcast, a labor market analytics company, to determine where skilled needs and job opportunities are now, and also understanding how they will change and develop and grow 10 years from now. Last week, we launched a pilot of our new project management program, an industry that's expected to have a job growth rate of 10.5% over the next decade, but most importantly, because it spans across multiple industries. Today, our team will outline a new community health worker certificate program for consideration. And when we look at Lightcast's Occupation Importance Index, this position, the community health worker, will be highly critical in California's workforce over the next few years based on variables like demand, projected growth, and the current supply stress across multiple regions in California. Additionally, we're updating our IT support and cybersecurity programming to ensure alignment with CompTIA curriculum, which is a necessary step in staying ahead of the curve in the changing skills requirements in related job roles connected with these industry certifications. And at Calbright, really every day is about what more we could be doing to foster the success of our students in the virtual classroom and beyond. And the rapid pace and progress of our accomplishments is driven by the specific needs and experiences of our learners. Every accomplishment we achieve, every student that gets enriched by their experience at Calbright, it lays a path forward in which Calbright is the blueprint for adult learner success. As we plan for more progress, both within our operations and for our students' futures, we recently hosted our inaugural virtual summit. It was a truly inspiring two days for the Calbright team centered around our progress and vision for the future. I gave a State of the College speech to drive home our mission and underscore the need for and the importance of our work on behalf of adult learners. I mentioned that we're building a critical innovation asset for higher education. And when people across the country increasingly ask me about our work, I tell them, "This is the right place, this is the right time, we have the right people, and this is the right team." As we build Calbright, we're not just building any community college, we're building a scalable system for equity, for economic mobility, really a new kind of engine for student success. And with that, I want to thank President Costa and let her know that this concludes my remarks.
Thank you so much. Next up, colleagues, we do not have a closed session today, so we will now move on to Section 3 of the agenda, which is our consent calendar. Do any trustees wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion or separate Seeing none, is there any public comment?
There is no public comment.
Thanks. With that, colleagues, I will entertain a motion in a second.
So move.
Second.
And Rawlings. Oh, I get to do a voice vote, right? Well, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Next up, there is a slight note to the agenda order, or no, I'm not there yet, sorry. Next, we'll go to the 2024 California Community College Trustee Board Election. I want to just point out, because we've done this before -- oh, yes.
I'm eager to speak.
Okay, so let the record note that trustee Gomez-Hightsburg has refrained from participating in this discussion. We do this item annually, and so just for the new board members, I want to make sure you understand sort of the process of what we do. We are a member of the Community College League, and this is strictly -- the item before us is an approval to give the executive committee authority to select the candidate for election on behalf of Calbright. And that's what we've done since we began this process. That discussion will take place during the executive committee meeting held on April 17. I always say, for those members who are not on the executive committee, feel free to communicate to myself, or honestly, trustee Haynes is the one who really helps us, given her deep knowledge of the league. So if you have any particular comments or things that you want to share with her, please do, because she'll be presenting the item when we discuss it in the executive committee. With that, I will turn it over to Ajita, if she has any comments on this item, and then we'll open it up for discussion.
I do not have any comments on this item.
Okay, thanks. With that, colleagues, is there any trustee discussion on this item? Wow, all right. Any public comment on the item?
There is no public comment.
Okay, with that, colleagues, I will take a motion in a second, again, to delegate this to the executive committee.
So move.
Second.
Great, I have a motion and a second. With that, will all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. This is where we have a change in our schedule. Before we present the next action item, we're actually going to change the order of the agenda by first presenting Information and Reports, item 5.1. This is one of our Labor Market Insights agenda items regarding the community health certificate program, because it'll provide the context we need when we get to the action item. So with that, I'd like to invite the staff up to present.
Good morning, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the Board of Trustees. Michael Younger, Vice President of Workforce Strategy and Innovation at Calbright, and I'm excited to be joined by my colleague Ben Doe, Calbright's Director of Research, Data Strategy, and Effectiveness within the Workforce Strategy and Innovation Team. In alignment with our workforce-driven, equity-centered community design framework for program research, selection, and development, we're here today to provide the board with a preview of our research and findings, supporting our intention to develop a new community health worker program. In this presentation, we'll review Calbright's research and development phase, which consists of a comprehensive labor market information deep dive, as well as quantitative career scan and qualitative insights gathered from the field. You'll also learn about the unique role community health workers play as it relates to linkage between the community and clinical services, and their advocacy role on behalf of communities regarding issues related to social determinants of health. Without any further delay, I'll turn it over to Ben to kick us off.
Thank you, Michael. Good morning, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the board. My name is Ben Doe, Director of Research, Data Strategies, and Effectiveness, and I'm excited to be here today to share with you our program development process and some of the labor market insights for the community health worker program. Our program development process, as you can see here, has a roadmap that covers not only the research, but includes a comprehensive statewide jobs and career scan. The Labor Market Insights includes both qualitative and quantitative, and of course, now, we're here to present the preview to the board. In the next slide, you'll see that our research starts with a variety of different sources -- if we could go to the next slide, please -- a variety of different resources, including industry, employers, and others in the fields, as well as policy considerations. We focus our program development research on what currently doesn't work for the people and in the education and employer marketplace. In the next slide, you'll see our occupational clusters. And please note, if we could go to the next slide, please note that in our occupational clusters, we've recently combined business and the knowledge economy under the umbrella of business. The program we are here to share, the community health workers, will fall under our healthcare occupational cluster. Next slide. And one more, please. So the community health workers have long provided critical and preventative, promotive, and referral services for communities in California that have been historically marginalized and disconnected from the health system. CHWs provide a wide range of services, including outreach, health education, client-centered counseling, and case management services that are an important bridge in providing resources to communities. They play a vital role in promoting health justice and reducing health inequalities in the communities that they serve. Next slide. It's also important to note that in 2022, the state of California expanded Medi-Cal to cover community health worker services as preventative services, providing additional coverage to communities and expanding demand for this important service. In the next slide, you'll see that recent labor market insights and data reveals that from 2020 to 2023, there's a 35% increase in jobs in the area, and it is expected to continue to grow another 16% over the next 10 years in California, exceeding national growth rates. Also, there are over 25,000 jobs for community health workers in California with a median salary of roughly 53,000 with higher median salaries for various regions. In the next slide, you'll see that flexible pathways provide these opportunities from a skills perspective. Many transferable, durable skills associated with this occupation, including communication, problem-solving, which can lead to a variety of different occupations, such as public health aide, health ambassador, health educator, and more. Next slide, please. See, here you could see some of the related occupations and jobs. These many pathways have a skills relevance of 60% or more, meaning the skills are aligned and could provide lateral or advancement career trajectories for the community health workers. Next slide. Currently, the demographic breakdown of individuals working in this industry indicates that the workforce is quite diverse, with approximately 42% of the workforce identifying as either Hispanic or Black or African American. This is of particular importance, given the role of CHWs in promoting health justice and reducing health inequalities within the communities that they serve. Next slide, you'll see the regional outlook. And regionally, many of the jobs are concentrated in Southern California, particularly in LA, Orange, and San Diego counties, but the highest growth is occurring in Bay Area and capital regions, as well as in rural counties. Next slide, please. So given the labor market demands and importance of the community benefit of this program, Calbright is proposing a community health worker certificate program that would meet the rigorous needs and requirements of the industry. The program would consist of six courses offered in a self-paced, hybrid, online environment supported by CHW faculty facilitators, and requires students to complete a 100-hour internship. Next slide. And lastly, as part of our research, we have -- we have -- excuse me, our program director and our team has been exploring a variety of different partnership opportunities, including those with healthcare providers and networks, community-based organizations and unions, and college partners that can help us provide internship training sites, pipelines, and other referral services for a training solution. We're happy to take any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Colleagues, any questions or comments? That must mean it's a great presentation. Or Member Haynes.
Slow on the draw. Excuse me. So the certificate that our students would be receiving, you framed it in a way that I just want to make sure that it is -- is it sort of an industry one? The tech field, it's just a given because they've identified what it is that they want. Home healthcare is growing, and so Sac City College had one several years ago, and it partnered with the Urban League here to do it. And so I'm very familiar with the program and just what it can do in communities, especially communities of color. So I just want to have you assure that that certificate can move relative to the state and relative to the community and be recognized by the industry and the communities it serves.
It's a wonderful question, Board Member Haynes. And yes, we have assessed the growing need for community health workers, but also working in collaboration with other community colleges and their more mature programs. It's been an incredible opportunity. I know our VP of Learning and Instruction, Dr. McCarty, and her team are engaged in the collaborative, which are a handful of colleges today that are working on the more college-wide approach or state approach as it relates to validating the certificate. And so that's an exciting opportunity as well in terms of future growth and demand in the field. So yes, we are collaborating across the board. We're not only collaborating, but taking the best practices to embed into our programs as we move forward.
Okay, I appreciate the answer. Thank you.
If I could add one more thing, the other thing I would add is just, we see this program as really important as a collaboration tool, not just with other colleges, but also to be able to contribute to the statewide effort being led by the chancellor's office in partnership with the United Domestic Health Workers. So our contribution to that pilot effort, that demo project effort, is likely to be this program. So when we think about not just moving this program into action, but also as we step through implementation, it'll have also a localized context in which we'll be able to engage both partners and folks who will be in the position to hire these roles.
So just an additive, I went to the graduation of 16 women. I think, yeah, all of them were women. And what they said is they would not have made it out without the support. And so, and I think that Calbright is positioned because it is forefront, and it's integrated into everything that Calbright does. And the faculty that actually, they were very, very committed. And it's not that all faculty are as committed, but for certain populations, you have to be on the ground, you have to be able to answer questions, you have to wrap your arms around these students to help them get through, because what, in some cases, they -- it's about leaving, you know? It's really, I don't think people understand. It's like, "I've never gone through such a traumatic growth spurt, and that I have to do this." And so the support piece is the relationship piece to ensure that these students, these adults, make it through, anyway.
I was specifically interested and wanted to know more about the 100 hours of in-person internships, specifically, like, how does that work? And are there any other programs that Calbright does that require that?
Thank you for the question. So right now, our program director has been working with a number of hospitals and other locations to be able to identify internship sites. And so it would be based regionally, so while our students, some of the program, and this is why we identified this program as an online hybrid. So of course, the curriculum and a lot of the coursework would be done online in the virtual environment, but we would need to be able to find internship sites, and then that students could be able to be placed. Currently, there are no other Calbright program that has that hybrid model, and so this would be the first in that.
And then one only piece to add, because it's such a great question. That career experience, based on research, we know is critical for their growth and long-term, kind of climbing the ladder, if you will. And so for this particular population of learners that we support here at Calbright, it's absolutely critical to come in with some level of experience as it relates to the program area of study. So I appreciate that question.
First and foremost, I think this is a wonderful program. And given, of course, we've just come out of the pandemic, especially when I'm thinking about underserved communities, we need people who understand their needs. And I know through COVID, we needed some wonderful people to work with those communities, particularly BIPOC communities. And so my question is, and in a way, it's related to Casey. Yesterday, during our Board of Governors meeting, we heard from San Joaquin Delta College, my home college, about their ADN-LVN programs, nursing program, and partnering with SEIU and unions, as well as industry. And so I'm wondering if you have some plans, perhaps learning from those best practices, I would suggest, but do you have some plans doing outreach with labor unions as well as with industry? And I was wondering, two-part question here, if you could speak to, perhaps, once this board passes, and I'm assuming that it may, we will, but outreach and recruiting, and how you're willing to disseminate this information to particularly those prospective students who will be interested in this program? Thank you.
Such a great question, Board Member, and I really appreciate that. On your first question, yes, we are leveraging our strong relationship with unions for both insight, expertise, and also sharing this great opportunity for their frontline workers. I know we have a very strong relationship with SEIU, UHW, and others, and so we want to continue to leverage both those relationships and expand our umbrella of partners as well. On the second, on the recruiting, Calbright takes a very intentional effort to ensure that we are within community with our community-based organization relationships and our extension to community. And so we will continue to navigate those particular channels, but also be very much in the field with our public-facing teams to ensure that the message gets out about this program and this great asset to the state of California, which is, at this current time, very affordable and free.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Florence Nightingale once said that nursing is the finest of fine arts. And I think the community health worker role fits exactly into that description. It helps build that connective tissue in our healthcare system that helps us refocus on wellness as a framework for our healthcare system. So thank you very much for doing this. I think this is absolutely critical. My question to you is digging a little bit, and is about digging a little bit further into the data. There was a slide that you had in the presentation about the number of jobs that were available and also the anticipated salary for each of those. Could you give us a little bit more description as to where that data comes from, what, truly, if this is the number for the salary that these folks expect to earn?
Yes, absolutely. So a lot of the labor market insights and the data that you were looking at as it relates to the job opportunities and salary, that is from a one-year
to the job opportunities and salary, that is from a one-year scan of the previous year, so from December of 2022 to December of 2023, of what jobs were in the market in, in the state of California. The ranges, as I mentioned, so the, the number on the slide was the median range for California. However, we know that there are a number of different regions that, of course, I think one of the lower salary bands in the Empire currently reports about $45,000 as an annual salary, median salary to start. And then the Bay Area upwards almost of about $59,000 or so. So it does vary by region, and it does also vary because of the community healthcare worker as a job classification could include multiple occupations in itself. And so it depends on the region and then what the actual role and, of course, the organization that they're working for. But it is a expected range for entry level and those with the skilled credentials to be able to earn.
And are you seeing this position filling the, the pocket that's called a healthcare desert? I know there's multiple healthcare deserts in California. Is this supposed to fill that workforce shortage in some way?
Yeah, I think so. Right now, when we looked at some of the, where, where a lot of the concentrations of jobs and where the highest growth are, I mentioned rural communities as one of the higher-growth area for this occupation. And so while the volume of jobs may not be as significant or high, the proportion of growth is happening a lot in the rural communities. The other demographic, there was one particular slide that identified the demographic and of the race and ethnicity makeup. We mentioned about 42% of the current workforce is a diverse workforce, where we know that there are underrepresentation, for instance, however, is in like, the kind of more, again, rural communities, the native communities, where there is a very high need for this type of workers.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, oh, Board Member Epstein.
So I don't have a Florence Nightingale quote, but I, I know that there's a lot of very large healthcare foundations that are interested in this sort of thing, including the one I used to serve on the board of. Have you guys reached out to any of these philanthropies to see if they're interested in supporting this program?
So I feel like we're at the early stage of this process, so pending board approval, this will be submitted to the Chancellor's Office for approval as sort of it moves through the pipeline. Potentially, we anticipate, you know, further engaging across all of our healthcare domain area, largely because we have noticed a lot of alignment in our philanthropic landscaping of foundations that are interested in solving the, these, these issues from a community lens and perspective. And so we definitely anticipate that down the road and potentially funding some creative ways, not just of, you know, launching and implementing a program like this, but everything that surrounds it, and including the, the sort of community health measurements that a lot of them are aligned in monitoring.
Thanks for the presentation. Mine is really just more of a comment, which is, I love this particular program, in part because we talk a lot about equity for our students, which of course is our core mission. But this is about equity in communities. So it really is a twofer in a lot of ways. And, you know, the sad fact of the matter is, we still have terrible inequity issues in this state on health outcomes. Black maternal mortality comes to mind as one that is, you know, really terrible in this state. So anyway, I love that we are addressing the equity of our students, but also pushing that out into the communities in California. So I'm, I'm looking forward to maybe more programs like this, but kudos, great job.
It's such a great point, largely because we're also finding counties as important anchors in this work, because this is a role often present in counties. And it used to be to, I'll give an example, I come from San Francisco, and community health workers were, in particular, especially during the height of the AIDS epidemic, a critical part of community engagement, outreach, and the maintenance of healthy communities. And when you think about it, that, that problem that, that counties are trying to solve and heavily engaged in, it's not even crisis care anymore, it's extending into chronic care support and other ways of increasing the health and resiliency of communities and, and integrating that into county point-of-service activities. And so we're, we're very excited about the prospect of also engaging with counties around the development of programs like this to see how best to align it with the way those goals exist.
I just want to piggyback on that, given the role of counties, especially with our, dealing with our unhoused and our homeless population, and California's push for mental health services, this all aligns with that. And so it's really exciting to see, again, partnership with our public health agencies, as you mentioned, as well as partnering, of course, with community-based organizations. I think this will really dig deep in helping not just, of course, our students get these wonderful paying jobs, but really addressing one of the critical issues that our state is facing today. So thank you again, kudos again for the, the wonderful report.
Thanks. With that, I'll open it up for public comments on this item.
There is no public comment.
Great, thanks. Next, we have the star of the show today, our Vice President of Learning and Instruction, Shannon McCarty, who has a couple of items for us regarding course outlines of record.
At CHW's and seeking certification. CHWs play a vital role in supporting low-income and other vulnerable clients to access culturally relevant services and advocate for health equity. This close, some, oh, excuse me, as you all have noted, this program closely lines with Calbright's mission and focus. And to further answer your question, Trustee Haynes, prior to developing the six CHW courses, our Calbright's Director of Healthcare Programs conducted intentional research and planning, and the program is consistent with the National CHW Core Consensus Project. And the national project defines comprehensive CHW roles, skills, and qualities, and is based on a national consensus that guides CHW practice and policy. All students will be trained in these nationally-defined core roles and competencies, which are essential for success in the field. So not only will they be relevant in California, they'll be relevant across the nation. The program includes a 100-hour CHW internship with a local healthcare employer, and Calbright also connected with other California community colleges to learn about their programs and practices, which allows for further alignment and support for our students. And all CORs have been reviewed by Calbright's Healthcare Advisory Council, and all provided thoughtful feedback on the curriculum. The suggestions were integrated into the CORs, which our internal curriculum committee has reviewed and approved. And so we are seeking your approval for the CHW program, which consists of six course outlines of records.
Great. Thank you so much for the presentation. Colleagues, questions or comments on this item? Seeing, oh, Board Member Haynes?
Move approval.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. With that, I want to open up the item for public comment before we take our vote. Is there any public comment?
There is no public comment.
Great. I have a motion and a second. We're on item 4.2. With that, will all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Any abstentions? The motion carries. You're in the hot seat again for item 4.3, Introduction to IT Program Modification, Course Outlines of Record and Distance Education Addendum for two courses.
Wonderful. Thank you. So I am seeking board approval for the Updated Introduction to Information Technology Support A+ Program. As you can imagine, remaining current with ever-changing technology is a relentless challenge, and the updated IT, IT Support Curriculum allows us to ensure the currency of our content and moves away from a siloed WF500 College and Career Essentials course to an integrated program approach. Calbright's Updated IT Support Program further aligns to support students for the COMTIA A+ Certification. This certification is an entry-level qualification in the information technology industry and is widely accepted as an industry standard used to kickstart a career in IT. The exam is broken into two parts, Core 1 and Core 2. So the Updated IT Program is now composed of IT 501, Information Technology, Core 1, and IT 502, Information, Information Technology, Core 2 courses. COMTIA also has recently adopted and aligned America Succeeds Durable Skills, verifying the importance of both technical and durable skills in the IT profession. Durable skills previously taught in WF500 will now be integrated into the IT program, and this ensures the skills are taught within the context of the IT role. All cores have been reviewed by Calbright's Technology Advisory Councils, their suggestions were integrated into the CORs, the CalBright Curriculum Committee has reviewed and approved all presented curricula. And so we are seeking your approval for the Introduction to Information Technology Support A+ Program, which consists of two course outlines of record.
Thanks for the presentation. Colleagues, any questions or comments on this? Board Member Haynes.
I just need, Claire, a bit of clarification, and it's my confusion. So we, how is this IT program different than the initial IT program that we started with?
Yeah, absolutely. So the IT Initial Program had two courses, which was IT 501 and WF500. So we are now removing the WF500 course, taking the durable skills and some of the career readiness opportunities, and then integrating them into two courses, which is now IT 501 and IT 502. So we took a lot of what was in IT 501, which aligned all with COMTIA, and now split that into two courses, but then also integrated the WF500 durable skills.
So how does that impact our students that received a certificate from the first one? So, yeah, I'll start with that.
Yeah, and actually, it won't impact them because the opportunity, like, at the larger, higher level, the program outcomes remain the same, and all the core competencies remain the same. It's just now kind of how we're divided into the two IT courses versus a WF500 and an IT 501 course.
All right. Good. Thank you.
Any other?
Okay. I'll just add one more thing, because I do think it's important and instructive, which is the way that the program launched and as we, the difficulty that some of the students had moving through it, largely because they were getting held up at, you know, a package set of soft and durable workforce readiness skills outside of the contextual learning environment. And so the really important evolution here in this, which Shannon is understating, Dr. McCarty's understating, is the ability to contextualize it and have direct practical application as you're learning the technical pieces, right? So you're moving through and you're constantly readying yourself in a way that prepares you for that step into the workforce, into the, into the job. And that, being able to contextualize the learning in that way lets you meet and demonstrate those skills, but in a, in a very contextually specific way.
For me, that's really important, because obviously, this learning that's competency-based, when you have a, you have a blockage, it becomes problematic. And if it's a continue, if you see our, our adult learners continuing with that blockage, then what you're, it's easy to understand what you're now doing is you've, you've changed the mechanisms so that they can learn that, and it's no longer a blockage for most of them.
Correct.
Or a barrier, or a stopping point where, because what, for me, when you get one of those, you sort of shut down, you go do something else, and then it's, and then you don't necessarily come back when you should be coming back. Okay. All right. Good. Thank you.
I was kind of curious about the timeline of taking the two courses, students in this program. How long does it take them to usually, or preferably, like, what's the timeline look like?
Yeah, so the IT Support Program is a longer program, so it's usually taking students approximately like 12 months to 18 months to complete the program. And for several, it is very new, and so a lot of like, the vocabulary is very new, and the practice is new, and we're taking students that perhaps are turning on a computer for the first time and then getting them ready to be IT support. So it is a little bit of a lengthier program.
So when you say 12 months, is it calculated based on if they, if they're, if they're doing this five hours a week? Or is it, what's the calculation for the 12 months?
Yeah, and we calculate it based on it is 10 hours per week is what we calculate it on. And that's that fluctuation of 12 months to 18 months.
All right. Thank you.
Great. With that, I'll open up this item for any public comment.
There is no public comment.
I'm looking for a motion and a second. He's always quick on the draw.
Second.
Oh, Epstein with a second. With that, will all members signify yes by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Next up, we have item 4.4, Introduction to Cybersecurity: Security Plus Program Modification, Course Outlines of Record and Distance Education Addendum for Two Courses.
All right. Thank you. And my final program. So we are seeking approval for the Updated Introduction to Cybersecurity: Security Plus Program Modification. It cannot be overstated, but maintaining currency and technology, specifically in the world of cybersecurity, is an ongoing endeavor, and the updated modified cybersecurity program supports these updates and, similar to the IT program, moves away from a siloed WF500 College and Career Readiness course to an integrated program approach. So Calbright's Updated Introduction to Cybersecurity Program not only aligns to support students with the COMTIA Security Plus Certification, but also provides choice and specialization. So COMTIA Security Plus is a global certification and validates the baseline skills necessary to perform core security functions and pursue an IT security career. The newly updated program now includes two additional options, either IT 511, which is the Cybersecurity Analysis Course, or IT 512, which is the Penetration Testing Course. Students will learn more complex, specialized technical skills and have options to specialize in either offensive or defensive security. After completing either pathway, students can earn a security certification, COMTIA Security Analytics Professional, or COMTIA Network Vulnerability Assessment Professional. And a student may choose to expand their knowledge and take the additional course, earning a second badge. And as students start to acquire industry-recognized stackable certification, the stackable credential begins to compound in number. So for example, if a student earns both the previously mentioned certifications, they are automatically awarded a third certification, COMTIA Network Security Professional. So the stackable model allows students to perform entry-level jobs while obtaining additional certifications, which can lead to career growth and opportunities. So similar to the IT program, durable skills taught in WF500 will no longer be integrated into the, will not, will no longer be separated, but will now be integrated into the cybersecurity program. And this ensures the skills that are taught are in context of the IT security role. Again, all CORs have been reviewed by our Technology Advisory Councils, the curriculum was reviewed and approved by our internal curriculum committee, and we are seeking approval for the Introduction to Cybersecurity: Security Plus Program, which consists of two additional course outlines of record.
Thanks for the presentation. Colleagues, any questions or comments?
Just curious, since cybersecurity is constantly changing, by the time you get a course done, then it's already outdated. So what's the process for staying kind of current on that? How does that work into your curriculum development?
Yeah, and I would say it's twofold. One of the key things that we try to do when we do write the course outline of records and write them at a high enough level, that we're focused on competencies, but we're not being too specific as to what those competencies will be. So allow some flexibility as we are continuing to update like, the actual content within the courses. And when we do actually leverage COMTIA content as well, so as they are updating the content, then we're ensuring that we're staying relevant and current with what those updates are.
And are industry people involved with you guys as far as, kind of what their needs are as, as, as technology changes?
Yes, so we do have a Technology Advisory Council, which does have cybersecurity professionals on there. And then we also have a lot of our adjunct instructors, our professionals in the field. And I would say that are actually our, one of our full-time faculty members is just an amazing cybersecurity specialist as well. So we have lots of individuals that are very certified in this area. Sure.
With that, I'll open it up for any public comment on this item.
There is no public comment.
Seeing none, colleagues?
I move for approval.
Great. I have a motion and a second. With that, will all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Any abstentions? The motion carries. The motion carries. Next up, we have our CFO with item 4.5, Approval of Agreement with CWDL Certified Public Accountants.
Good morning, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and the members of the Board of Trustees. We are seeking approval of CWDL as auditors for Calbright College. We started the search for new auditors with the following timeframe. On December 11, 2023, we released an RFP, a Request for Proposal for Audit Services. We closed the RFP process one month later on January 12, 2024. During the RFP period, we received three responses: CWDL, Clifford Larson Allen, also known as CLA, and Moss Adams. We evaluated the three proposals, and the final scoring was tabulated on January 19, 2024. We decided on CWDL, given a combination of their quality of responses, expertise and qualifications, aggressive audit timeline, and middle-of-the-road fee structure. Were there any questions?
Colleagues, do you have any questions on the agreement before us? Seeing none, I'll open it up for any public comment on this item.
There is no public comment.
I mean, I know a CPA agreement is really exciting. With that, I'm all, I'm ready to entertain a motion and a second on the item.
So move.
Epstein, Epstein and Haynes with a motion and the seconds. Will all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Any abstentions? The motion carries. You're up again. Now we're moving into information and reports. We have item 5.2, the 24-25 Budget Process and Timeline.
Good morning again, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the Board of Trustees. This presentation will cover the 2024-2025 Budget Process and Timeline. Next slide, please. The budget presentation fulfills the main objective of the Board Policy 6200, where the budget process and timeline are presented to the board. Specifically, the budget process will include the annual budget, shall support the college's strategic priorities, the budget assumptions are presented to the board for their review. A presentation is provided to the board by March of each year that includes dates for presentation of the draft budget, required public hearing, board study sessions, and approval of the final budget. At the public hearing, interested parties may appear and address the board regarding the proposed budget or any item in the proposed budget. Unrestricted general reserves shall be no less than two months of average expenses in a given year. Changes in the assumptions upon which the budget was based shall be reported to the board in a timely manner, and the budget projections address long-term goals and commitments. Next slide, please. Now I'll go over the budget overview. Next slide, please. So the budget overview involves three main steps: assumptions, adjustments, and finalization. So departmental assumptions include, the department managers start with the current year budget and the actual year-to-date financial information to judge their department's progress on a year-to-date basis. This forms the foundation for the next year's budget, which includes personnel changes, program additions, and the operating expense assumptions. Senior leaders meet to discuss and revise assumptions to arrive at a draft budget. To further elaborate on step one, the year-to-date information forms the foundation of how departments did this year versus their current budget year. I will meet with the department heads to fine-tune their assumptions and make potential recommendations. Once the applicable departments have completed their expense assumptions, I will consolidate these assumptions and present the results to President Menon and Chief of Staff Drummond for their review and analysis. The next step is in regards to the adjustments to the budget. Department leaders finalize their department budgets with input from senior management and the Budget Advisory Committee. A draft budget is finalized. As stated in step one, President Menon, Chief of Staff Drummond, and I will review the first draft of the consolidated budget. Several iterations of the budget will probably occur. These iterations of the budget will also include comments, ideally from the Budget Advisory Board. Any agreed-upon changes at the consolidated level will be communicated back to the applicable department managers. Once all the changes are made, the budget will culminate in a version two draft budget. The final step in the process is the budget finalization and presentation. The finalized draft budget is presented to the Board of Trustees for further review and acceptance. Public hearings are held with further adjustment and final acceptance by the Board of Trustees. Next slide, please. So the budget process. The next two slides will discuss the unrestricted and restricted budget assumptions. This slide, in regards to the unrestricted funds, include technology and related items, professional development, continued assessment of student programs, pathways, ongoing personnel costs, and other administrative functions or expenses for the college. The next slide will discuss restricted fund uses. And restricted fund uses are typically one-time in nature. These one-time expenses include scalable technology infrastructure, further research and development to ideally set up virtual labs or mobile labs to assist in learning, partnerships with key entities, development of core functions such as the mapping of the student experience, accreditation costs, development of core business expenses, which include the college's own accounting software, legal support, and other scaling efforts during the startup period. Next slide, please. Now we'll talk about the budget timeline. So this slide represents our budget timeline, rolling out the process, and starting in upper left-hand corner, the budget timeline starts with this meeting. The process actually started several months ago, where I periodically met with several department leaders regarding their budget versus actual year-to-date information. This formed the initial review of where the departments are with the budget and if their timelines are being met. These initial meetings set up the groundwork for the departmental leaders to assess what is needed for their departments to be successful. As department leaders send in their budgets, I will be reviewing their budgets with their narratives as support. As time progresses, I will, I will have a consolidated budget, which will be presented to President Menon and Chief of Staff Drummond for their input and review. This is highlighted in the blue arrow that's shown under the assumptions row. Once the final version is completed, I will share the budget draft and budget, with the Budget Advisory Committee for their input. This is highlighted with the somewhat yellow-looking arrow that's midway down through the assumptions tab. After a few more iterations, a final version will be completed by May, which will be sent to the board for the June meeting. This is shown by the purple arrow that is midway down on the slide. The June BLT budget meeting will gather any changes requested by the Board of Trustees. The budget adjustments will be shared with the Board of Trustees throughout June and July until a final version is brought to the Board of Trustees for acceptance at the August meeting. This is shown by the blue and the orange arrows pointing from June through August, with public acceptance of the board, the 2025 budget by the board in August. Were there any questions?
Given the economic landscape, what processes are you building in, just in case we have some dramatic shifts in income? We may not have dramatic shift, who knows?
I think, yes, you know, it is hard to predict the, the way we would need to adjust depending upon, you know, should such an unfortunate event arise. I think prior to that, we're spending a great deal of time to be very clear about the deafening impact of potential restrictions on our funding would occur, both in terms of the disruption in the educational experiences of the students that are currently enrolled in our institutions, as well as our representative, representative staff and faculty. So we will continue to sort of monitor the budget situation over the coming months and be active participants in advocating for our students at Calbright and our staff and faculty. As we do that, I think what is also essential to understand is that, you know, the ability for us to realize our strategic vision, including the opportunity to have a deepen, a further impact and reach and support so many more learners across the state, would be in jeopardy should we be facing any restrictions in our funding.
In that event, have you looked at trying to encumber the one-time funds so that they can't be clawed back?
So, you know, I think we, we have been very judicious and very conservative in our expenditures over the multi-year, seven-year period that we have, especially on our restricted fund use. And what we know and have line of sight on now is, again, the deep impact that any potential clawback or cutting of our funds would have on our ability to operate the institution that we're operating today, as well as for any ability for this institution to realize what its statutory objectives were. So, you know, we will continue to act in that fiscally responsible way in the coming months, and we will be responsive to any questions or inquiries that come our way with respect to our fund use. However, you know, at this time, we're not going to, we're not going to further take actions that are, that are sort of outside of moving forward in a very judicious and responsible way.
Is there any public comment on this item?
There are no public comments.
Okay, thank you so much for the presentation. We will see you again as we begin our budget development process. Thank you so much. We have our standing item next, 5.3, which is Reports on Contracts and Purchases.
Thank you. Yes, we had five contracts that were initiated in May, I'm sorry, in the February timeframe, and we also had expenditures amounting to approximately $647,000 that also occurred in the month of February.
Great, thank you so much. Obviously, there's written materials as part of our agenda. Colleagues, do you have any questions or comments on this particular item? Seeing none, is there any member of the public that wishes to provide comments?
There is no public comment.
Okay, next up, we would have our constituency group reports, but I would note that we don't have any this time, so none of the constituent groups have a report for the board. So next up, we open it up, item 7.1, for a public forum. Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard?
There is no public comment.
All right, colleagues, the business of the Board of Trustees is now complete, 10:04 a.m. Thank you so much for your participation. This meeting is adjourned.